Good morning and welcome to the 11-7 Commissioners Meeting. It was done this way because of the, normally it's on Tuesdays, but we did it because of the election, so welcome this morning. I'd like to start off with communication.
Hello my Father, I want to come before you and the county here in Wyoming thanking you for your grace. We hope that all great things and wonderful come from you. We ask that you bless our county and our nation in Jesus' name.
Amen.
I would like to lead you to the light of the United States of America and to the three God that for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
I'd like to add the library biz along with, we could put that in with maybe if they came on the full business. And also remove arena resources, Justin Proback. He was not able to make the third day.
Remove that one. Um, I believe, oh, go ahead.
Um, your old business, did you put it on the back of that? Letter from Mr. Stolken. We just needed to, just put it on your old business just to review so that we can approve it.
Okay. We also need to add for Tens.
I think he's under, oh, highly eighty-five.
Okay, I just, because I know he said that we needed to do something for him too, so. Any other additions or changes? Have a motion that's been properly seconded? Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to the consent agenda, is there anything that needs to be pulled?
Move to approve a consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion to approve the consent agenda and a proper second, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll be opposed, pass around.
(laughing)
I was in.
Do you have a pen?
Yes.
Just in case. That's the exciting part, but Chase music.
What I'm passing down now through the board is the minutes for the special meeting. We're going to do a motion to approve those minutes as well. I'm not sure if it's all ready, they were sent out, but I'm just making sure.
Do you want us to finish on these?
No, those don't need to be finished. I just can't remember. I've been helping.
I move to approve the special meeting minutes.
I have a motion to approve the special meeting minutes, do I have a second? I have a motion that's been properly seconded, is there any discussion? All those in favor to approve the minute for the special meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'm aye.
Okay, so moving on to public comment, before I open it up to public comment, I want to make a, first off, we all, last night I was made aware, I'm sure a lot of you are here for that reason, that there were some issues, or they called them anomalies, was not aware of it until last night. Um, I understand there's people here for that, but what I would like to caution the public on is, is that I have been assured, and I'm sure our clerk, I'm not speaking for her, she'll speak for herself, but this election will not be certified until the anomaly is figured out. Um, I don't want to, I mean, our imaginations can go wild, I get it, and I want to take the high road and say that we need to, um...
I'm sorry, I take exception to you addressing the public before public comment to try to direct our freedom of speech here.
I'm not, I'm not trying to be directed, but I do want to make sure that it's civil.
Well, I don't need to be told to be civil.
Okay, go ahead. Then, then I should...
That hurt for me a second.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, Walter Sprague, Newsletter Journal. Like you had mentioned, there was an anomaly that appeared in the election results when, and it is specifically the one that's in question at this point, is for the state representative, House District One. Out of the four precincts, fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-three total ballots were there, that's the contest totals. Of that, Chip Nyman got a hundred-and-sixty-six votes, there were eight write-in totals, and twelve-hundred-and-eighty-nine undervotes. That does not seem possible to us. This, I became aware of around ten, ten-thirty on Tuesday, uh, November third. Um, I went in and talked to Becky at eight-thirty on November sixth, and I asked her if there was any problem with the voting machines, and I was told at that point that there were no problems with the machines, that that undervote was basically due to the county declaring vacancy in this, the two precincts here. And that that was basically a vote to support the vacant, the vote to support that vacancy as a no vote for Chip Nyman. However, J.D. Williams, and this is where it really got to my curiosity, he got sixteen-hundred-and-sixty-two votes out of two-thousand-and-seventy ballots that were there for those four reasons, and there is nothing in my head where I can reconcile that the north and south parts of this county are split that much in their thinking how they're going to be voting when it's an issue along these lines. Uh, we found out later that Becky was called at eleven-fifty by Brian Culver, that she needed to get a hold of Chuck Gray, who had been trying to get a hold of her and was not able to. Yet I was told at eight-thirty, there was no problem with the ballots, with the tallies, and there obviously is some kind of issue there. I have been instructed to find out why was I told there was no issue, and why was it directed towards it being an issue about people not voting in support of the vacancy that was declared.
When I, when you came in, I had not heard that from Chuck. Chuck called me at eleven o'clock that night. He said, "Do you feel there is a problem?" I said, "No." He said, "We're working to see if there may be something wrong with the machines." And I said, "Oh," I said, "I don't think that there is. You can be in contact with you the next morning." When you came over, I had not talked again with Chuck, and when you and I were talking, Walter, I told you, I felt that was my opinion.
Yes.
I never told you that is what happened, and you know that you and I were talking casually, you and I. I told you that is not what happened. When, um, Chuck and I talked again, we, um, discovered that it was something with the ballots, and ESNS was going to recalculate all of the results, and they are currently working on that right now. Nothing malicious was done on my part or ESNS's part. The machines did everything that they were supposed to do. We will not certify the results until we have new calculations. The canvassing board has had calls from you guys, which is very unprofessional. They should never have been called. When Carrie visited with us the day we were working on the election, we were originally going to have our canvassing at two o'clock, though, today. That was before we figured out there was an issue. We moved the time, we didn't know when we were going to do it. We have since talked to ESNS, we hope to have everything back from them today. We, um, are planning on having certification tomorrow, the canvassing, um, at two o'clock here in the commissioners room. They will certify the correct numbers. I have visited with Chip, I have apologized to him for the numbers being low. He was very understanding, he was not mean to me by any means. Um, we're going to get this fixed. It was...
You were, Chuck, you, you mentioned to me that this was unprofessional of the newsletter. When we came in yesterday and Kim interviewed you, one of the questions was when the canvassing board was going to meet, and you had said at that point that you did not know.
I didn't know.
That is when she called one of the canvassing board members, which was...
Doug Jory.
Doug Jory.
And they were still thinking that they were meeting today. I had not called them yet and told them that we were not meeting. I was hoping ESNS would have everything to me, and you could still meet at two o'clock today.
None of that information was given to us.
I didn't need to give that to you. I had, I didn't have my ducks in a row to tell you to broadcast that to the public, to tell them to come here at two o'clock when I myself didn't even know.
Okay.
But you have no problem slandering me on the, on the internet with false information.
I didn't say anything about you on the internet, all that is on the internet is...
A lot of false information.
The video, which is not changed in any way, of that interview with Kim, that is all that has been put up there. Um, when I had talked to you yesterday morning, there was no mention that there was possibility that these totals were incorrect?
We didn't know that at that time. I didn't know that at that time.
Did you know at that time that that was a possibility?
No, I did not.
You had talked to Sheriff Culver at eleven-fifty the night before, and, um...
I still at that time had told Chuck Gray that I did not think that there was anything wrong.
Okay.
And I'm not, I'm telling you the truth. There is nothing malicious going on here.
I didn't say there was something malicious going on, but we're getting different information than what the facts are, and our job as a newspaper is to keep our elected officials accountable first and foremost.
Right.
And when it came to this, our job first and foremost is to make sure that every person that cast a vote, that that vote was counted, that their voice was heard.
And that is exactly what I want too, and that's why we're working on getting that done.
And that is good, and I'm glad you're doing that.
Yes.
Um, but when we are getting little bits and pieces of information from other sources, and it's different than the information we are getting here...
You should come to me.
It starts, we did come to you.
Right.
It starts looking like something is trying to be hidden.
It isn't, and you should not keep going to those little bits and pieces from other people. You need to come to me and get it from me.
We did come to you.
And everything that I told you is the truth.
All right, I'm going to hold up on everything. This isn't, actually on the agenda, this is public comment. The acknowledgement has been made that there is a problem, and I believe the acknowledgement has been made that we're not going to certify it until it's looked into. I am sure that we all want it to be valid and right, I'm sure candidates do, and it may only pertain to one, but, um, let's see if there's any other public comment.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the Newsletter Journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuke Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
That we all want it to be valid and right, I'm sure candidates do, and it may only pertain to one, but, um, let's see if there's any other public comment.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the Newsletter Journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuke Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
That we all want it to be valid and right, I'm sure candidates do, and it may only pertain to one, but, um, let's see if there's any other public comment. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Karen.
Well, as, as a member of the public and has, um, a high regard for the validity of our vote, I would like to propose a hand count, uh, because in my mind, that would restore my confidence considering the machines were unable to tally the vote correctly.
The machine did what it was supposed to do.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Taylor, I would respectfully request the commission's help in making sure that the public's votes are counted and counted properly. I have very, very serious concerns. I was alerted to this, I was called by the Secretary of State, uh, at eleven-fifty on election night, unfortunately I was asleep, um, because he was looking for Becky. So it was clear at that point that there was a problem with the election results. I was then called again at seven o'clock in the morning by Chip Nyman, who asked me to look at the overvotes and undervotes in his race, and it is so clear that there is a problem here. There is no conceivable way that only a hundred-and-sixty-six people, and only two in Osage voted for Chip Nyman. It's nonsense. It's totally wrong, everyone knows that. And for the clerk to say that she doesn't think there was a problem, it's nonsense. And I have tried repeatedly for openness and transparency in your office, Becky. I have tried, I have asked when the counting board meets, I have asked when the canvassing board meets, and I am not told. That is not right. These are public meetings, the public needs to know, and the public has every right to be there. And there is no reason why these meetings are scheduled at the last minute, in the dark of night. We should, in order to restore public confidence, we need to have openness and transparency. It has to be open and transparent. I told them when we were meeting. The only way I found out that the meeting at two o'clock today was canceled was from a, a, a canvassing board member. That is how I'm getting my information, and that is not correct. That is not right. And I am glad to hear the clerk tell us right now that she is not going to certify this election, and that the canvassing board will not certify this election until this anomaly is figured out. But for her to say that she has been open and transparent about this process is entirely incorrect. I also would like to let you know how much of a struggle that we have had to get these machines tested. The Wyoming Republican Party takes election integrity very, very seriously, and we have been all over this since before the primary. We begged to get testing done on the machines. It was done in a cursory manner in the primary, and even worse before the general. It was left to the very last minute, despite me asking many, many times when we could schedule, I don't want to hear about the elevator or anything else. You'd need to do your testing, and you need to do it properly. This county failed the election testing to epic proportions. I had a hard time getting results from Becky, she wouldn't send them to me. I then had to file a Freedom of Information request with Michael Stolken's office to get the results of the election machine testing, which was then sent to the experts at the Wyoming Republican Party, who stated that we failed epically, and this was probably the worst testing they have seen in the state. Becky then did retest at Michael Stolken's urging, but clearly it wasn't done well, because if it was done well, you would have found an anomaly of this proportion. It was not done well. And while there may not be maliciousness, there is clearly incompetence that happened here, and you all county commissioners owe it to every voter in this county to make sure that that level of incompetence does not happen again. I have tried, you all know how hard I have worked on this, and how hard the Wyoming Republican Party has worked on this. Half of these people in this room were poll watchers or election workers, they care. And I am devastated that I gave my word to people that their vote would be counted, and for fourteen-hundred people here, I failed in that mission. And that hurts me. So I ask for your help in making sure that we do not certify this election until we are one-hundred percent certain that every race is correct. That's what I'm asking you for today.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Chairman, I, I would ask that Becky explain to us the difference between the counting board and canvassing board, and to explain to us the process of certifying the election through the canvassing board.
The counting board is needed if there are write-ins that need to be counted, which they were not made of this election. There were no write-ins that needed to be counted. The canvassing will certify the, um, the results of the election.
What is that process?
They're going to go over the results, and they, if there were write-ins, they would have went through the write-ins. If there were provisionals, they would have made sure that the provisionals were done correctly, which there are neither of those. So they're going to go through and look at all of the, the races and make sure, um, the races, the races were on the ballots correctly, which that is on the printout that they're going to get, and then they're going to certify that.
Is that what's referred to in the statutes as the abstract?
Yes.
Okay.
And that will be printed out, and that's the printout that is printed out that is online, that's the abstract, yes.
Um, do you, who takes the minutes at this meeting?
I do.
And are there minutes on file from August that we could see?
Um, I, yes.
I would like to request those. Um, do they look at the poll books at the...
They don't, I do.
No, canvassing board does?
No, they don't.
Yeah, it's right there.
It says that I do before the meeting to make sure that they're correct.
It says the canvassing board does.
It says that I look at them prior to make sure they're correct.
Hold up again, um, listen, all these points are valid, and I don't, I don't think any of us as commissioners are disputing them. I just want to make sure this is not on the agenda, this is public comment time. We are, or it is being investigated, as we've been talking about with the Secretary We are, or it is being investigated, as we've been talking about with the Secretary of State and with Becky, she's assured us that it will not be certified. So what I would ask from the public is to please wait for those questions, we can put it on the next agenda to answer those questions, but at this point, let's figure out what the problem is before we go any further.
Oh, one other, one really quick, one other really quick comment. Becky said that she didn't realize there was a problem. It, it only took me ten minutes to go through all sixty-some districts and that uncontested um, of races, and see that Chip Nyman's was the only one that was flipped. So it doesn't, it shouldn't have been hard.
And I'm not questioning that, I can, no ones I don't think are arguing that point at this point.
Well, good job, maybe you can come in next time and talk to the voters.
Wow. Wow.
Um, any, any other comments?
I just had mine, um, and, and just as, as a quick side note, I felt like the election itself might really sneak in. There it did, and during the, at least from my perspective and the, and um, but my cons- like with, with the Osage area precinct is so easy, that, I mean, you know, you can just make one or two phone calls and know that it's not right. And um, what, what I just wanna be assured of is that it won't be certified if those, if, if the election still says that Chip only had two votes in Osage.
And, and she said it will not be certified, so this is correct.
Okay, so they, I'm, so E S and S is gonna go through and, and find out the state of the election.
And they're going to every ballot, so there were two ballots for that race, and the program reads the one that was the correct one programmed for that machine. The one that was not was just kicked, kicked out, that it wasn't reading that right. So they're going through and reading every single one for Chip, and giving those ones that it kicked out, giving him the credit.
Again, all these are valid points, but let's keep it to comments, and then there's another public comment at the end, and we can continue from there, we just wanna make sure that it's there, so. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, my name is Stanley Jocinski, tax payer, and I'm also the secretary for the Western County Republican Party. And I was very engaged in this election, a lot of people applaud that. I helped to try to get people to the polls, to bank the votes, so it has the thing, and as a result, uh, on election day, two hundred and thirty-two people were registered, that weren't registered before. Um, I was also part of the testing for these machines twice prior to. I also gave my word at the Republican meeting before, just before the election, after the first test failed, that we would make sure that these machines were accurate. I uh, believe this is a machine anomaly. I'm not gonna reiterate what other people say, although I agree with a lot of what they said. I'm just gonna say that I'm glad that I came here today. You know, we should be celebrating a great victory today. And the victory we've got is because people watch fair elections, okay? I got an email, I woke up this morning, I got two emails from somebody from Gillette, with the video that was already talked about, and Cowboy State Journal, whatever, and a frickin' newspaper writes about it, you know? And I, and I got a call yesterday, and my heart sank, because I, I don't wanna be talking about this today, I wanna be talking about the victory that we just had throughout the country, in this county, in this state. But I'm just glad to come in here today and hear that this is going to be investigated, it's gonna be corrected, and until it's corrected, and to our satisfaction, it's not gonna be certified. That's the outcome I was looking for today, and I found it here today. Because I don't wanna have to go to that frickin' canvassing board, I got a lot going on today, and we all got a lot going on today. So let's, I'm, I'm happier than, pigging, you know what, to know that this process is gonna take place, and that we're gonna come to the, our conclusion. Uh, because the genie's out of the box, as we heard, and like I said, if they're talking about it in Gillette, they're talking about it everywhere. And uh, so let's correct it, let's send a message out that we fixed it, and that this is a good election, thank you.
Thank you. Make sure you, everyone, the commissioners sitting here wants it to be accurate as well. We obviously were involved in it, so we want it to be accurate. So I'm sure that it will be followed up on, we will put it on the agenda for follow-up questions on the process, and I'm sure it'll be transparent of what the issue was. Um, so we're gonna move forward with our next thing, we have public comment again, so if there's anything that needs to be added, but it's not question time, it's a comment time, and save those things for when it's on the agenda, if that's what you choose to do.
I live on Beaver Creek, and I'm really nice right now. I was pretty much born before, but it's getting there.
Mr. Chairman, will we get notification of the canvassing board as soon as possible?
Hopefully I have that today.
Welcome, Jeff. Thank you. So you guys got the way pretty much correct for that. They also let you know, you know, the D N S staff are a regular from one eighty-five, they think that it was supposed to be in the end of December, January, but they have bumped that to April. Which was a construction, uh, for the twenty twenty-five, before the next election. So, I don't know if she's still recording or anything, but they did. They get, they get the signature, the rock sign is, most of them are, they're probably like.
Wait, you're on the signs? Those are the farmers that knocked over a sign, some of the old speed, laying in the ditch out there somewhere.
I have some.
Oh, video.
I didn't find the address. I'm not sure. I should stop working. One of my brother's, I think, fracking, he's been here, he's been in the place, he's been short for a while. We have transmission going, we're writing those, that's one five hundred for a million to provide some. I'm not, you know, two days, it's twenty years. I think that was part of that truck, he told me to call somebody, and we're about to, you know, we thought. True finish third, frac project, not my dog crack. I mean, it was, certainly they stopped it and see what they're gonna do to fix that code, maybe it's the bigger damage, sure, all sorts of people, but, see what happens, maybe it's.
Is there any attention being given to section of mortage down there, kind of by the vinxens?
Yeah, we hold it up.
You just, okay, yeah.
I'm gonna get more down there, you know, just have a few hours.
Yeah.
They didn't scrap it for the, for the rest.
You said you had, you had?
Yeah, I guess, we've had a lot of, there's, there's lots last week, but that's coming around.
I saw a thing, Jimmy, last Friday and the Friday before, and his data off, he was personally out there on a blade, legging when there was some moisture.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, about to be on.
I've heard one, three other guys were on, sorry.
Well, tell them thanks too, that was, the moisture was there, and it was, that was the time to be bladed.
Yeah.
Pass the word on to them too.
So you can drive it, boy.
And he beat him on the road though.
He's been trying to find that. And then even bring it up, yeah. Okay, yeah, there are two copies of this agreement to be signed, and I need to get those to the White House.
When will the public do that?
Uh, I think he's gonna be down next week, I think.
Pass it down, yes.
Yeah, I, I think it's, unfortunately, you beat up a road, but at least this, this well over in Buffalo Cricks in Western County, and we're gonna see some revenue generated from that, and this stuff going on in Northern Nibberack County bothers me, and I, to some extent, um, they're using, what, sixteen plus miles of road on us?
Well, it's actually more than that, because of the sand trucks, I know the last time they were actually going in on the Bruce Road and across, and I, then they started going on the Razor Road, and I talked to Federal Water yesterday, and they're going in on the Razor Road now, I think it's just starting to get better.
So they're destroying our roads down south, we're not seeing any revenue from that, and at some juncture, I, I'm sure it'd be getting blood out of it, turn up, but it'd be nice if Nibberack County, be willing to chip in a little bit on some of that stuff down there, I mean, it's infuriating to me that, I mean, I know that's part of the game, but it just, it's frustrating when you hear gripes from oil field companies down there that our roads are junk well, then help fix them, you know? If you're not generating any revenue for the county, or very low revenue, um, you know, just get some help from them, and if true does help, that's wonderful. Glad to hear that.
I was hoping that Justin was able to make it today too, with the green resources, he was gonna speak on behalf of that rubber.
But I did listen yesterday, if you did have to cancel, I think he's gonna try to come to the next one. You know, they didn't get their money to work with us, hopefully, you know, they'll have it done or something. It's, you know, it's kind of dissonant, but, like, they're gonna go down, leave no water, it's impossible.
And on that, what Nate said there, even after they're done fracking, well, they're gonna get all the water trucks coming across us, because they, all that water comes out of there and goes all across physics. Even after the projects done, we still see their trucks on the road.
I mean, on, that road down there is a disaster. I mean, and at least gonna come in on the Bruce Road and, I mean, there, and that, that whole Shire River Road is a disaster because of those trucks, but.
You know what, it's not a hundred percent they're fault, there are paint trucks, and now that we did spend ten thousand dollars to grab a lot of patch and spots across that Shire River Road, they're basically keep it drivable. Any other questions?
I'd also like to echo Mr. Wagner and Nate's concerns on the road, but I'm sure Wagner's comments, I saw, I mean, you guys, I've gotten calls saying how much nicer Mall Road, the road is up there, um, you had the water truck out back on them, so I appreciate the extra effort, it was much appreciated.
Yeah, we're doing what we can in this, in this life.
Big difference, I mean, thank you. Thank you.
Make sure it's better, chief.
Oh, they complimented me too, but they browned it so much yesterday.
Sorry for the delay, Dan. It's, have a seat, no, only, we need the information on this before we.
Listen to the, yeah. Yeah, where do you want?
I had to eat one, but I'll, I'll put it in this, yes?
Yeah, right.
Where's the tree, Gilbert?
Um, there's some of it, the training that I'm in, and I have to say to pick it up.
I've taken enough raw feeds from the local, it's a year.
Am I sitting in somebody's chair?
No.
She is. Okay.
You sit in.
So I'm, I'm used to that.
I have your cell number.
What's that?
I have your cell number.
Yes, you do. You want me to keep you company there? I, it's not your email, but I can, yeah. Coolie. Is it Owee? It's a good call show. Yeah. Bye. Hello?
You know me.
One second, I'm just trying to get this. I'm sorry for the delay. Okay, well, you're sure of?
Oh, pretty sure.
Okay.
Unless you wanna leave, I don't.
Unless what?
Unless you wanna leave, I don't. Left you.
Well, you, go ahead. I'm sure he can listen to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I'm sort of, well, I have three things that kinda need to go over. Uh, one is our camera system for the detention center. Uh, we needed to look at our detention center camera system, because it's a how-to-date, um, you can't upgrade it, can't fix it, can't maintain it, uh, cameras are starting to have some issues, it's probably twenty years old. Uh, so in that portion of it, um, Gilbert also reached out, we tried to give a few grants to get that, we were unable to, um, we got some money on that, something four thousand three hundred and seventy, uh, camera system. We've also included, uh, our impound lot and the annex building, since there's no, include security into camera and that, so areas that see that committed. We had Golden West do a quote, Golden West quote was just under ninety-nine thousand dollars, and that's when I originally, and that was just for the sheriff's office, and that's when I asked for the grant, and I got this, I only got twenty-four thousand zero seven dollars for it. So that's when we started looking elsewhere for other quotes.
Did you say nine hundred thousand dollars?
Ninety, just under ninety-nine thousand, like, just ninety-eight thousand something.
So, so unfortunately, this is a.
The carriers will be making arrests.
A very expensive project. It is an expensive project. Um, so, uh, like I said, we reached out to Burkata, another camera source, um, for the three building, or the three locations of the detention center, the annex and, um, the impound, it came minus the install portion of it, is a hundred and eight thousand three hundred and sixty-five, um, around there, so, so that's including the cloud scorer system, uh, user licenses, they have a lot of, uh, features in there, such as you can put up boundaries, and, uh, so if somebody goes into an area that's restricted, uh, you get alerts, unlike current systems where you just have to view hours upon hours of footage, so.
Facial recognition, um, stuff like that.
We also reached out to Motorola, which we all know from our previous project, uh, those are expensive, they're a hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, that was my whole, like, two hundred and three dollars, uh, theirs is including the, um, in-house, it looks like in-house server, um, that we would have here, that's a five-year contract, uh, you know, I can't, you know, the other camera system has a ten-year. um, current cameras in this courthouse, um, they can be integrated into a system if ever decide to move that into that portion of the, um, on either.
How important is to have cameras over at the impound yard?
It's important, um, so it's important because it's, it's at least storage and so, um, abandoned vehicles, um, we've had, we've had that covered there, um, we recovered that, that vehicle that was stolen personally, trusty, but it prevents that portion of it. So it, it is important, um, also if there's, um, something, because it's right next to the, the county yard, um, could be something to, um, look at expanding at some point into there for their security portions of it because there's a lot of return money there, so it is important to have it.
Well, I think the fuel tanks are right there beside that.
Yep. Their, their gate closes, but you can still go and walk right over that wall, so you can still access that there yard, I mean, at any time, so there's, there's laps in security.
And you can set up, from my understanding, set up, uh, alarms and everything else for people enter at certain times and stuff or, or, um, are lingering in an area that we're not supposed to.
So would like, who would that alarm, would it alarm like dispatch or would it be something that you guys would have to go back and pilfer through all the footage and try to figure out when the next thing was?
It sends, it sends people to have the note, for a notification on that one. Uh, Motorola system will notify dispatch, bring that camera up, off that Motorola system and show that.
That's something going on.
That's something going on.
There's activity or something, movement or something.
Anyone who has the privileged portion on it will get that notification, so, so we can, we'll be able to set that up for, for dispatch, because it's a web-based. Okay. Keep going. I'm just, I'm sure there's no other questions about that.
No, no. So, um, the other portion, um, we have is on the opioid fund.
I'll just tip up the gate. We just are putting sixty-two thousand more in, so the total's a hundred and thirty-one.
Okay. Um, so, uh, right now, we're, we use that opioid fund to, uh, purchase the canine unit, um, the dog. Um, I would like to kind of make sure that we have about thirty-five hundred dollars for this next year to, uh, for its training, its maintenance, the, I mean, we do get, be donated from the arena, um, so to continue to maintain that, that dog, uh, costs about thirty-five hundred dollars a year. Uh, I just kind of like to make sure we set aside, I would like to ask if we can set aside that portion of it, so we can continue on that.
So one month, few years like that, it's kind of the, kind of the, we've got, we need a budget at least thirty-five hundred.
Thirty-five hundred out of that opioid fund for that value, so it's not coming out of any other portions of the budget, so I grant on that, that fund.
Beth, can you make, have you already made notes on that? We need to make sure we set aside that much opioid fund.
So the next one.
What's that?
Your next thing you've brought someone about.
Yeah, I have two, two more things that probably can come out of that.
Well, because it's designated for a canine.
Yeah, so, um, the other one is, uh, the current canine vehicle on that, for sheriff's vehicle. Uh, the Tahos aren't real reliable. We've, um, we've had on our fifteen, our last one, we've had to replace all the electric camsha, engines and transmissions, it's been in the shop. This new one, uh, both banks of the third camsha, hers been replaced. Uh, water pump, uh, washer pump, they just can't run that time as much as that. The vehicle's not just designed to run as much as it needs to with that dog. Um, so, we would like to look at purchasing another vehicle. Um, we're looking at the F-150 pursuit vehicle, which is a police orientated vehicle. Um, it is, to equip it and purchase it would be eighty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars. The vehicle is fifty-five thousand, uh, minus the update, so the, the, the dog systems and everything else to maintain it, uh, a canine vehicle costs a lot, a lot more to build than, than our little, um, other people have not had issues with the ports and their engines like the Chevys, so, um, we're kind of, we'd like to, I was originally gonna ask for, we would, but it needed another thirty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, um, because I was gonna ask also for, um, all, would like to, uh, go to Blue and Gold Law Enforcement Training, um, to bring them here for and pay for Newcastle officers, uh, the sheriff's office for training, um, in report writing, uh, search and duty, and duty and duty, and that would cost somewhere fifty, twelve to twenty dollars. Uh, so we would, we would pay for all our Weston County law enforcement officers and Newcastle Police Department. Um, we'd open it up to outside agencies to come in and then they would pay, but if we didn't, to fill all the seats that we needed, we would have to sup, supplement that cost. Uh, it would be about three days worth of training, so we'd have to do six days for, you know, six days worth of training, uh, throughout the year, two separate things to get everybody, uh, so, um, if they pay, i- if we fill all night, we'd need nine more seats to fill in from other outside agencies, um, it wouldn't cost us any, it would cost us, uh, six thousand dollars, correction, twelve thousand dollars if we had to pay for every training to make that, it would be about twenty thousand dollars, but I'd like to use that out of that opioid fund because that is also the training, that's the policy that we have to get more to work.
On that, so the total, how many seats?
Uh.
Overall?
Overall?
Yeah.
Um, we would need eighteen. We pay for all, all our current officers, we pay for our, uh, fourteen, I think it was, thirteen or fourteen I had, I had set aside, and then we got a discounted rate for group, so that amount of group of officers, uh, so we get a discounted rate, so it's three thousand per, per two-day class, so we'd be six thousand for all Weston County law enforcement.
How many officers with Weston County?
Six. We would send, since, since this opioid fund is for the whole community, we would send all of the sheriff's office deputies, which are seven.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
And then all the Newcastle Police Department.
So there's how many there?
There's, I think, eight, but there, they have some openings and I don't know where they're gonna fill, so I, I, but I do.
So there's a six and there's eighty-seven?
Yep.
So, question. Again, opioid money goes to some of these things, obviously, and it doesn't cover all of it. Maybe that portion of it, would the difference be, uh, would the difference, would it be able to be shared with the city instead of just the county pay for it all, even without the opioid?
I have talked to the chief, uh, and he does have a term and budget where he could, he could help pay for that if, if he did not have, if there was not enough.
Cause I'm doing the math and if you add it all, we're still over that amount, like the hundred and thirty-nine thousand or whatever.
Yeah, there's more in the opioid fund than, than what we would, than what I'm asking for the whole portion of it.
There's enough in the opioid?
Yeah, cause I would have only needed, I, I figured we had, uh, last time was like seventy-four thousand.
So you said twenty thousand for the training total?
Twenty thousand on the high side.
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done. Totally amazing.
There's enough in the opioid?
Yeah, cause I would have only needed, I, I figured we had, uh, last time was like seventy-four thousand.
So you said twenty thousand for the training total?
Twenty thousand on the high side.
That's max.
That's, that's if, if nobody came and paid for any class, no outside agencies, no, because we opened up, uh, South Dakota, all the agencies in Wyoming, Montana, so, and they have a pretty good reputation of pulling people in and then we go through an advertising process of.
Yeah, because that means thirty-five thousand and the opioid.
So, and that, and just maybe I'm being slow here, but so, if you have the camera system, let's say it's ninety-nine thousand.
The camera system.
Is not.
Is not.
That's what I'm saying, but sorry. That's not included.
That's not included.
Alright, so that's why I'm adding up going, wait a minute, that's more than what.
No, no, the, the opioid fund can, can only be for, for the vehicle, the trainings and, and the canine portions.
And that includes the thirty-five hundred set aside, the new sheriff's vehicle and the training?
Yes.
Okay, and, oh, now I'm getting better. And then we'll have to decide, so we have twenty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy in a grant towards the ninety-nine thousand for the cameras. I'm just putting all that numbers together, right? Is that wrong?
There's a lot, I, no, I get it, there's a lot of, um, the camera system that, uh, is a hundred and eight.
Okay.
Three hundred and sixty-two. Uh, Golden West was ninety, ninety-nine, ninety-eight thousand just for the jail, so I think we'd be better off.
Doing the total.
Doing the, the Burcata, the hundred and eighty thousand.
Right.
Portion of.
And then Golden West would maintain those cameras?
No, Burcata would maintain those cameras, so, and that's including a ten-year service contract.
Yeah, so it'd be basically, it's free for ten years at least.
At least, yep.
And they got a twenty-four hour service, if something's going wrong, that you can call them and, I mean, they will get online and they'll help fix it. You can give access and like, there's something.
And I can like, okay, here, Beck, you can watch this camera or something and I can give them the access on phone to watch this camera type of deal, I mean, there's, it's so.
I apologize for asking the question.
No, you're good.
No, that's alright.
Is the, the Chevy that's breaking down all the time, is it a lemon? Like, do we need to get rid of it and try to recover some?
So.
That was gonna be the next one.
Or give it to me and get rid of the blue one?
So, um.
So we can break down for you?
So we did, so we had, uh, I think it was like two thousand and eight Tahoe, that one was a good vehicle, we bought, we got that in two thousand and fifteen, that thing was breaking down for a while, almost every other month. Um, we tried another one to see if maybe we just had a lemon. Um, I think it's just the, the type of work that it's, that we're asking it to do for the idling and the running, I just don't think there, there's.
Do you think somebody, we could market it to another police department somewhere or somebody in train?
I would.
Wouldn't bother me a bit.
Um, what I would, what I actually like to do is, is hold on to that one as a spare just in case when, because vehicles break down, uh, we hit deer, um, as we know him, because we've put a lot of miles on and everything else, so there's times that, of the other vehicle, it would be good to keep as a spare, um, not to be ran every day and to be picked up as, as a spare, because if we don't have a canine spare, that, that dog would not be deutilized or could be brought out. We ran it that problem a lot.
What year will we currently have?
A twenty-one, and it's running out of one, so, um.
And luck, luckily that was paid for by a grant, that was, got that through the, through the grant. And we're kind of working with Daniel too, um, rotating one of them to him, the fifteen, fifteen, which needs a few months, which, which that thing's gone through four fuel pumps, so, and that process that we have, and it only has a hundred and.
I kind of get the need to keep extra for backup, but would you, just suggesting we'd work more trading it in to reduce the value of the new truck and then, I don't know, but.
I, I don't know.
Diamond it, you know?
Well, that's what, what I was saying is like, if we can use it as a spare, leave it there, or when that dog, if one, the other vehicle, because vehicles break, um, needs to be brought to the shop, there's at least that vehicle to transfer into.
It's already set up for the dog.
Because you can't just throw in any vehicle or, or tear those seats.
Question, Beth, so a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, how long would it take to get that built up? Is that like a two-year, three-year deal?
Not very long, and they just, just keep getting more and more.
Yeah, I know we, I just kind of wonder how long, how long it takes us to get it built back up, make sure we have a cushion or some of this.
It wasn't long, we just got sixty-two thousand dollars yesterday.
Was that a six-month period, year? We just, we just showed up.
Yeah, they sent an email and explained this is how much you're getting from four or five different companies.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, in the interest of saving us some time, can we add this to next meeting agenda and then we can actually try to break through the numbers and see if there's.
Absolutely. We'll just put it on there, that's what we can, that's a good, I mean, it's kind of a, I was gonna say, we can, yeah, if you want to break certain ones out. Which it isn't a no, we're just saying less curms the numbers and look at it and see what we're.
Yeah, I think if that'd be helpful to me if there was a, if you could bring whatever numbers and you guys, whatever you want to use, and then some of the other stuff.
The numbers are already warming.
May, well, just from those opioid numbers and, and, cause some of this stuff, man, have become like an ARPA jar or something.
Which is, we can't see the cameras or camera system.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna have to weigh against the other things that we gotta fix too.
What's left?
It's just the, the training one, is that one, or is it time sensitive, it got used?
It kind of does because they have to at least schedule four months out for it to come.
I was wondering, is something that, can it wait?
We're, well, we're looking into twenty-five. Or when that dog, if one, the other vehicle, cause vehicles break, um, needs to be brought to the shop, there's at least that vehicle to transfer into. It's already set up for the dog, because you can't just throw in any vehicle or, they'll tear it up.
So, a hundred thirty-nine thousand, how long would it take to get that built up? Is that like a two year, three year deal?
Hmm, not very long, and they just, just keep getting more and more.
I know we, I just kinda wonder how long, how long it takes us to get it built back up, make sure we have a cushion or some of this.
It wasn't long, we just got sixty-two thousand dollars yesterday.
Was that a six month period, year? We just don't know, it just shows up.
Yeah, they sent an email and explained this is how much you're getting from four or five different companies.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, in the interest of saving us some time, can we add this to next meeting agenda? And then we can actually try to break through the numbers and see if there's.
Alright, absolutely.
We'll just put it on there, that's what we can, that's a good.
I was gonna say, we can, yeah, if you wanna break certain ones out.
Which it isn't a no, we're just saying, let's cruise the numbers and look at it and see what we're.
Yeah, I think if that'd be helpful to me, if there was, Becky could bring whatever numbers in, guys, whatever you want to use. And then some of the other stuff. May, well, just from those opioid numbers and, and, cause some of this stuff, man, it have become like an ARPA jar or something.
Which is okay, it's a camera system.
Yeah, and that's what we're gonna have to weigh against the other things that we gotta fix too.
What's left?
Is this the, the training one, is that one, or is it time sensitive, it got used?
It kinda does, because they have to at least schedule four months out for it to come.
I was wondering, is something that, can it wait?
We're, well, we're looking into twenty-five, so.
Okay, so we're into next, uh, portion of it.
So two weeks won't jeopardize it, won't jeopardize it.
I just wanna make sure that we wasn't, a time sensitive issue on that.
No, we'll, we'll be okay, we'll.
We'll put her on the next agenda and we'll get some. Yeah, we'll make.
Okay.
Any objections to that? Thank you for the amount of numbers. Yeah, yeah, I had to spend it for a minute, I think.
Are, are we still discussing with the cameras or, since it's kind of a separate issue?
Well, I think that's where we need to.
We need to look at our.
Yeah, or, or whatever else you, if, if it's a necessity, trying to figure out.
At least I got twenty-four thousand to go towards that, which will help. A little bit, tiny bit. Would you like a copy of quotes on those?
It wouldn't hurt if Becky could email it to us.
Yeah, none of those cameras, I, I get, your, those are twenty percent, like, we put security cameras in our facility three years ago and they are obsolete. We had to do a new system that we put in this week, actually, so that we have the audio and the, so I get it. It just seems like it's being obsolete off of, twenty years is a long time.
I was gonna say.
Two thousand four is the last time they did any.
So, back to a Tahoe. The gold Tahoe that was the emergency management vehicle before I got the red truck is just sitting. And it went, the, uh, road bridge went through it, I had to put a new battery in it, everything runs fine. The Upton Fire Department needs a new command vehicle. And I would like to see if the county is willing to sign it over, Upton will pay whatever they need to, to get the title and their name. They need a new command vehicle for their fire department, I'm wondering if county commissioners are willing to let that vehicle go to the fire department. It's not being used by the county, it just sits out the county shop, doing nothing, it's.
Is, is that under, is it in the emergency management section of the county or is it just all the county?
It's all county, yeah. The assessors used it for a while, they didn't want it anymore, it's just sitting out there. Um, they went through it, they put new shocks on it, I just put a new battery in it. Upton looked at it, says, yeah, I mean, they can't afford nothing to buy a new command vehicle. It's had lights in it before, I mean, so they could outfit it.
What year's that?
Uh, I think it's a two thousand eight. So, it would help them and benefit them, it gets the vehicle out of their lot.
And I would guess, at least from my point of view, I would say, if we're not using the vehicle, I'd rather have it in use or traded in for less or something or given, I mean, I don't have an objection to it, it's up, up to the board, but.
Have them pay fifteen dollars for the title switch and let them have a first command vehicle until they're done.
What I've been hearing about the Tahoe is like, let's get rid of this thing. In writing, no implied, no warranties implied.
Yeah, as it is. Maybe make a motion for that.
I'd make a motion to transfer the old emergency management's Tahoe over to the Upton Fire Department. They paid the title fees.
I have a motion to transfer the emergency vehicle to Upton as is and them to pay the title fees and costs for that transfer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion properly seconded, is there any discussion?
How many miles are on that one?
I, you know, I'm not sure, it was a deputy vehicle, then it went to a command vehicle.
You feel it would be useful to them and.
Absolutely.
Independent.
Yeah, I mean, and it's only gonna be used around Upton, it's not gonna be, um, and that's why Darren went through it at county shop and he says, you know, it looked good to him, so that's what I'm kinda relying on, is that he said it was good. He said they only needed new shocks and he replaced those, so.
If there are all the equipment that's need to be taken out and just taken out of it.
Yep, yep, everything was stripped out of it.
So, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Awesome, thank you very much.
You guys will be, you'll be happy.
Thanks, Gary.
Yeah, Eric.
Morning.
He's just a bystander, I don't know.
Hello.
Good morning.
If you could say your name, so that people are.
Sure, Eric, it's Zinsky, maintenance manager, what's it like there?
Hi, Eric, what can we do for you?
Well, um, I believe all of you got a letter from. And I just basically came to see if you guys have any questions about that, have any discussion about it. I don't know if you have any revelations here, they have sources, first, I'm just coming up to you guys, potentially from my perspective. So, I'd love to come in and then help, help answer any questions or thoughts or whatever you guys might have for me.
Guess I didn't realize that, that's why I thought you were just coming in for the.
Oh, okay.
Rough update, but.
Well, we do have that to discuss, I guess, you know.
I think the, on the letter side of things, I think that that needs to be discussed for sure. And I'm afraid it's gonna take longer than, um, and maybe some of that needs to be done in executive session.
Absolutely.
Um, I don't know how the rest of the board feels about it, but if you'd be willing to, this, my personal thoughts is maybe we add that aspect to the agenda for the next meeting and then set up part of time for an executive session. To Zinsky, correct? I don't know what you guys, what you guys' thoughts are on that, but.
I, I have no objection, so they can, it is, um, you know, kind of employee related. Uh, I know the fair board's in there, but I think that would probably be more appropriate and give us a little more time to. But I don't, my question would be, the word is, should the fair board be included in that meeting? That way, there's no he said, she said, that I said, they do said, kinda thing. Well, I mean, if it's, it kinda eliminates any of that, but it's a question.
Do you, do you feel everything you needed to say was said, basically, in that, um, like?
Broad stroke.
Yeah, I understand.
And my intent wasn't, it's not to make anyone feel uncomfortable, my intent isn't, isn't really to go into the weeds.
Yeah, yeah. Part of the problem.
Unless it goes that way.
Part of the problem I have, just jumping on this today, is we just started a new path and now, um, I was going, personally, I guess, a couple of weeks to think about it and maybe a chance to have everybody here and at least get the, I mean, are you comfortable with those thoughts going out, that letter going out to the, being broadcast and.
I think it would be out, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, now that you guys admitted it, it's.
Well.
Potentially.
I think it's probably employee related, so I don't think it's.
It'll be discussed, yeah, unless, I'm, I'm good with whatever you want to do.
Yeah, Gary.
I think an executive session would be a good idea, with as many available for that as we can with it.
Yeah, I don't, I just think it eliminates the, if we have to have another meeting, because we didn't have.
Sure.
As long as it's not to put you on the spot or to make you feel uncomfortable, I just think it's more open, but still transparent and it's, keeps it, you know, any employee issues, you know, the way it should be. So is that okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Yeah, okay, so we'll schedule an executive session. And I would request to, uh, get Mike to do that too.
And I would encourage invite fair board to the meeting and, and we have a discussion with them. Or if it's a short workshop afterwards, or, I don't know, whatever.
It's a new path, so I don't. Anything else on that issue, we'll move on to the roof issue. Okay, everybody got a copy of the second estimate? I can't remember if we talked about this the last time or not, but the S and S estimate from back in the spring, uh, would, was contingent upon them getting a couple of the projects that they'd been on, so if they only got the one project, say the door, the fee for stuff would go up a little bit, not, not dramatically, in any.
Good. Question that I had on that one was, I think that door was like nine grand, for that side door, somewhere around there.
I believe it was that. It was eight or nine, yeah.
Eight or nine.
I know they were gonna replace it and flip it.
Different swing.
Different swing. And that was all, is that coming out of our building, the ground, or was that gonna be ARPA?
Sorry.
The door and the.
Yeah, I think we could use trial fund for it. I was just trying to pull up the email.
Were you, on that, the roof there, are you comfortable that's gonna fix the roof and take care of the problem?
Yes.
It just, it's not a Band-Aid, it's a.
No.
Full of surgery, it's, yeah.
As long as they are capable of fixing everything that needs fixed, it's, it's just a resealing, you know, make, and, and, could be, you know, take it out, put it back in, with all your clean caulking and, and, yeah, all this, going through that process.
Were they, might I say, is some of that tin is wrinkled on the roof, were they gonna replace that?
No.
They were just gonna remove it and reseal it all back up and put the wrinkle tin?
Twenty-two hundred was the amount, was that what it was? Make a motion to either the fair board or Butterick Zinsky, work with the, these folks to get that resolved for the amount that they quoted.
Proud of Weston County, even though I don't live there anymore, I'm proud of Weston County for standing up and saying, we need to preserve our small communities, they need to have a preserved voice in state government. And I'm, I don't know how it's gonna pan out, I don't know if these are the greatest candidates that we're sending down there, but it doesn't matter, it's about the principle, and I'm glad that they're forcing a conversation.
And that's exactly what they're doing, is they're forcing a conversation, nobody knows how it's going to pan out. Uh, nobody knows how long things could sit in court, nobody knows what's gonna happen if those two show up down in Cheyenne in January for the session. Nobody knows, but nobody's going to find out, nobody's gonna know what change could happen by this action unless somebody takes the action and grows some cojones and says enough is enough, we're not gonna let these bigger communities and the legislators from these bigger communities bully rural communities.
Make a motion to either the fair board or Butterick Zinsky, work with the, these folks to get that resolved for the amount that they quoted.
Roof source or?
Sorry?
Which one, roof source or S and S?
Which one are you more comfortable with?
Um, I'd like what Roof Source said, that these, their information was a little more detailed and, but S and S, I'm sure they do the same, you know, good job themselves, as far as the roof goes, um.
I'm gonna have to use the Roof Source. How much was the S and S?
The other one was, was presented back in the spring.
Oh. I don't recall, the other one was a couple hundred bucks.
Yeah, from, from S and S, they, it was like seven hundred dollars, I think. But that included them being down there doing all the other things, so, for them to just come down for the roof, it wouldn't be, wouldn't be seven hundred dollars. But I did like what he expressed as far as addressing the roof jacket stuff being a problem, not, not just the caulking.
Yeah. So.
Are, are we talking about the door also, did we just start that?
Well, not my motion, I'm gonna execute my motion for the, for a moment. So, so, yeah, that's the problem, we, so if we go with the one roof, we're looking at seven hundred dollars to fix the roof, but he also want, I can't remember what the.
Have nine for the.
Nine for the door.
Right, so it'd be, you know, ten, eleven, should fall apart to do both.
They also had included in there the divider for the room too.
That's right.
Well, that was, um.
It wasn't that part of S and S, no.
Well, that was part of the S and S, but it was part of the, their total bid was twenty thousand dollars, include all of his own things.
But the major things we need to get fixed are the door.
You want the door and the roof, or the two things you had me address.
Yeah.
The last meeting, so, uh, those two things, um, are covered by S and S for that ten thousand, um, area. And then twenty-two, just for the roof of the.
Twenty-two hundred.
For Roof Source, you, you owe anything about the door.
I think you could also check with Architectural Specialist on the door. That's who we use to do the courthouse door, the sheriff's office doors, they do really good work, can they give a good warranty?
They had a rapid.
I'll get you their number.
So you're, you're thinking, Brandon, just fix the roof and maybe.
Maybe get another bid on that door and see if Architectural Specialist is gonna be cheaper than that nine grand from S and S.
Yeah, cause I mean, the S and S bid is kinda pretty broad, so trying to, put more of them to the door, isn't gonna be very fair of a bid. Because it's, so, what I'm hearing right now, I'd be more comfortable with getting Roof Source to fix the roof right now. Open the door back up for bids, if, just, just strictly a door only bid. That's, I'd be more comfortable with that, it's in what the board feels, but that way, we know we're dealing. One bids for the roof, and then the next bid we get is gonna be for the door.
I think we would ask to, that, that new bid, opening it up for the door is with a little more detail that we've been trying to pick up for all these, with warranty parts needed. I've got the information from Architectural Specialist on all that.
Okay.
Okay. I would, I'd make a motion that we award the twenty-two hundred dollar bid to Roof Source to fix the roof at the event center at this time.
I have a motion to repair the roof at the event center, roof, is it Roof Source?
Roof Source, yeah.
Okay, Roof Source. Uh, don't second, I have a motion, it's been properly seconded, is there any other discussion?
I think it's a great idea, because before we have mountain snow up there, let's do it. Yeah, the door we can attack.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Perhaps we'll open it back up, or if you guys could get some bids on that.
Get your brand, get, whether to get bids for the door.
Sure.
Open back to that, that's gonna be done.
Question, wanna wait?
No, I'm fine, you wanna make a motion on it, or?
Uh, I'd make a motion to the chairman's signature on the whiteout amendment, I could get the number on it.
Yeah.
Two? And a two. For the county roof.
I have a motion to, for the chairman to sign the, a board for whiteout on the county roof, sorry.
On amendment two, to the cooperative agreement between Wyoming Department of Transportation and Weston County.
What she said. Can I, do I have a second? I have a motion properly seconded, do we have discussion?
I, I just crunched the numbers here, okay, they were at two million, nine hundred eighty-one thousand, three hundred thirty-seven dollars. Our share, if it does go up, would be two hundred eighty, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, one hundred thirty-three dollars. If we look at a fifteen percent increase, it'll push it over the three million, and they'll only go up to three million. So if it's fifteen percent increase, it would go to three point, three million, four hundred twenty-eight thousand, five thirty-six. Our ten percent cost of that would be three hundred thousand, and then we would have to pick up an additional four hundred twenty-eight thousand, we went over the three million. So we are looking at a max. to go over the three million, so we are looking at a max of seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, five thirty-six. If my numbers, if that makes sense, because it's going to push it, fifteen percent will push it up over, and that's kind of what their projector we may look at. That's the cause at the present time. And we do have that in the county road.
Any other discussion?
I just can't, we didn't push out another year, and I just, just seeing on a full page, I don't think this is, I don't think we're going to be surprised at what it's, the cost is actually going to be in twenty twenty-six.
We have a motion properly seconded, we have discussions or any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed?
Nay.
Yeah. Okay, um, thank you. Moving on to old business. Your ankle.
Awesome.
Welcome. Um, I just wanted to follow up on the workshop that you guys had regarding the policies and procedures workshop that you guys did, and what your paths were.
My thoughts, I looked over, I mean, I've thumbed down through Larry's portfolio there, and intently looking for something that will not be appropriate for Weston County, and I really couldn't see anything, I mean, I think a lot of it's very appropriate for the program also.
So what portions of it would you like to add to the resolution?
I mean, I did, I was no, I was looking for things that were not appropriate for Weston, for possible additions.
So you want to leave it as our resolution, or do you want to?
As far as our workshop, is that what you're planning?
No, because we have the resolution that has our, our Weston County's policies and procedures down, so she's wanting to know what we want to add to that one. No additions, I don't have already.
I mean, what I, what I looked at our procedures was, they seem fine with us, and we, we kind of, I remember whose we all of the procedures went over, but we did a kind of copy and paste off some other counties back in, was it twenty-one, when we did that?
Twenty-one.
And I didn't, I didn't say we need to make any changes to this. It looked pretty good to me.
How do you feel about it? Um, I had a couple of questions, and maybe some certain sections that I thought might be good coverage. Um, my first question was, section ten on our resolution states that for geo, no geographical preference will be allowed with federal funding, however, in the Laramie County one, it said that there's a state statute that does allow preference made to supplies and material equipment within a five percent margin to Wyoming-specific processes, so I didn't know, I guess maybe that's more a question for Michael on how that works with federal grants, do we, is there that allowable for preference?
I'd have to make sure before that's answered, yeah, I can do that.
Okay, I can do all that too.
Yeah.
That'd be like, uh, the five percent preference in state bidders.
Right. So, because ours right now says no preference given, and then but the state statute says that there is, that is allowable preference.
But we, we've always followed it, so, I mean, every grant, or every, but every bid we've ever got, we've always ensured whether they're in state or not.
Maybe we need to change that wording in that to a five percent in-state preference, which is a simple, one, one sentence, you know, we'll show a five percent preference in state bidding. That would follow the state statute.
And then my other question was, um, there's certain wording here for budgeting, um, monitoring, and accounting, and which we don't have in our resolution, so I just didn't know if we wanted to add some verbiage specifically for how we do our budgeting and accounting for grants. But we just wanted to leave that out in the roses. So when Paul comes, if we're within a certain threshold, like if we have seventy, seventy-five thousand, he has to do a federal audit on us. So that's my law, and I don't know if the state statute, if that falls under, so I just didn't know if we wanted to add that into the resolution. Just to have it in there.
I'm saying that, you know, if we could come up with some verbiage of, that we will follow
All federal and state.
Federal and state laws on that, because I know we, they're very strict about watching our grants, how we audit them, we're already doing it, but we just need some, like some verbiage in our some of the statements.
Yeah, we have to.
Yeah, we're doing it, but this way we're covered on the
Resolution, yeah. Because I know some grants will require a copy of our policies, and first of all, I didn't know if it would be beneficial just to have something that says, yes, we are doing it. And see, that's why that, that resolution was done.
Several years, kind of aggressive, I would have a problem, you know, working with Becky, you and Michael and Audrey, kind of come up with just some verbiage, just to put it in there so we're covered, so we don't get kicked out on some one sentence. I see a problem with the change in those two sets, you know, parts of that. Rest of the board deals.
So I could work with that community on how we want to order for it, and then present it. And then start a county plan, do we want to set up a workshop or something? And what to go after, you know, just kind of what to do with. They kind of did that, but it'd be a good idea to maybe put a survey out to each department, just asking them what their thoughts are on their software needs, personnel needs, infrastructure needs, and just kind of get feedback from each department. I thought maybe that might be a place to start.
I want to present it to, just to kind of weed out some of their immediate needs. Put a master plan together and say, um, department-wise, um, department goals, and some long-term, so we can develop a county plan based off of their, their long terms.
Yeah.
Right here today, so we need to do a preemptive, well, that's not part of your master plan though.
Right.
Yeah.
I would come on, on that same deal, like, a need in a one list, and try to put it together for the whole, all the different departments in the county, so we aren't duplicating and doing, well, they needed this, so it's like, well, if we can get it in one plan, we may get a better deal on combining stuff together, yeah.
Yeah, I think the last is in the one's list, and probably a massive update, because there's a lot of stuff that's been taken care of, or different works are being taken care of, so that we're kind of all on the same page, or we'll be on the same page.
The longevity of what they have, how long do they expect it to last?
I think that's a good idea, just put it out to all the departments. Get a, a master plan going down the road.
Start to get rid of it.
One year we'd like to be here, two years we'd like to be here, I mean, maybe even three or four years out, just as a start, you know.
Thank you. We can keep that together, maybe, and then see if you guys like the questions we want to have.
Really good ideas, thank you. Thank you for your efforts on this.
So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I guess I'm here once again, hopefully. I feel we get something moved upon, because we haven't, in my opinion, kind of just pushed it down the road these months. Uh, the county attorney is here, I, I feel that he needs to have direction from your board to know which way you're thinking, so that he, he does not take orders from me, and he does not take requests from me, from this board. And I, uh, feel that we've just been kind of pushing this down the road, and we either have a motion on the floor, or a more solid thoughts from the board directed towards the county attorney, so that he knows which way to react on your behalf.
What would you like the board, how, oh, go ahead.
I think I got a pretty good feel for it, I guess, what, what's going on up there, what we basically need to do is, we need to get an easement from Mr. Urban on that last three hundred yards, or whatever it is, of something filed in the courthouse, that there's an easement from the Urban family for that piece of ground. And secondarily, on that, we need to keep that easement fairly wide. Right there, and then the third portion of it is the remaining road, it's two hundred fifty feet wide, which seems a little bit ridiculous for a county road. We crunch that down, and I think with Mr. Urban willing to potentially give us an easement without fee, as long as that maintained, is maintained as a county road into the future, then we can potentially put some thought into decreasing the width of the rest of that towards the original, or the new highway. So, I mean, I could try to put that into a motion, or we, we discuss some issues with that. Right now, like, there's going to be fencing issues, probably, um, that are going to have to be addressed, um, there's going to be a surveying, but all that can be taken care of with county road funds, so. I could throw out a motion and see where we go with it, I mean, in discussion, or we quickly have that discussion and, and see if we can come to something agreeable with Mr. Urban, and we do a motion and try to make it clean up.
Can we, can we try to have it resolved so we can move forward?
I think, I would love to get this done today, how many times have you been in here?
I'm open to listening to what we're going to try to put something together, like you said, that way we explore with him, because I think he has been in here a lot, and I don't think there's any arguing with any of us that we need to get, we need to get it resolved, so. What would you suggest?
I was thinking that three hundred yard I don't know, is it two hundred yards, maybe a hundred and fifty yards?
We talked about three hundred yards, and I think you're close, I haven't gone out strictly, of course, survey is the only way to know.
Yeah, I was just pulling it up on maps and I'm feeling a line distance.
That's all I've basically done.
And it was close to that, so, my thoughts are, let's, let's, if Mr. Urban will give us an easement, not sell us land, give us an easement on that three hundred yard length from the old bridge towards the new highway, two hundred and fifty feet wide, and, and that way there's ample room for construction in the future for that bridge, and it also will, um, make an opportunity if something ever happens, and there's going to be a turnaround put out there for like semis.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, New Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Let's, let's, if Mr. Urban will give us an easement, not sell us land, give us an easement on that three hundred yard length from the old bridge towards the new highway, two hundred and fifty feet wide, and, and that way there's ample room for construction in the future for that bridge, and it also will, um, make an opportunity if something ever happens, and there's going to be a turnaround put out there for like semis, or large RVs that tend to go down that road, trying to, being led by MapQuest or whatever it is, there's that ability for that to happen. And then with that, I would also propose, maybe we decrease the width of that easement from that point, that three hundred yard mark, to the highway department um, right away, to hundred, hundred and fifty feet, whatever we deem is reasonable, which is still probably double of what our county road easements currently are, are they eighty feet? Maybe we do a hundred feet, I don't know, but
Most of them are sixty.
Sixty feet.
Some of them are a little higher.
I think law or I brought sixty-six feet.
Sixty-six feet.
Uh, but at the same time, I don't believe sixty-six feet is near enough to maintain that section of road. I think it's, on your behalf, it needs to be wider than sixty-six feet, you know, I'm speaking against what I possibly, but I, I a hundred feet, a hundred and twenty-five feet, the old highway easement, the old section of highway that comes from down south is a hundred and twenty-five feet. Uh, that's what they, when they maintain that as a highway. Now, uh, whether you want to go to a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred feet, that's up to you, that's, I'm leaving that, maybe up to you, what your thoughts are.
Could we do that on the recommendation of Jim Hansen? Would that be something he could recommend to us?
I'm sure he could, but I mean, if, if it's one twenty-five, I mean, that would be, would be a starting number, I would think we would be the same, I mean, that way we know we're covered, but I don't disagree with, you know, Jim, should have the same.
Would I, does mine have a C P S in town?
Yeah, I was wondering if he's still here, but I don't know.
So, what I was hoping is to get something resolved, so the county attorney has direction to work on that, and
Well, I think we can include in this, in this motion, that he, do the, our attorney do the legals and do what's necessary to whatever.
Yeah, I agree with you, but I don't know that he would have to do that without a survey.
Yeah, I'm kind of, where you're at, there's like, we need to get something in stone that we are authorized, they have to be surveyed, and this is what our recommendations for the easement be.
I, and I agree with you totally.
That's, I mean, that's, and that's, I feel like that's something we can do today, we can put it in, it's going to be a long motion, but authorize the surveying to be done with that one sec, that, like that three hundred yard section brought down
Appreciate it.
to the width we want, and the other one, or at least get the, get the measurements in the motion of what we want. For the, where it's really wide, bring that down, and then leave that, so there's no easement at all to work with the attorney, the attorney to work to you on getting that, for that width, whatever we decide on, out to the highway.
And leaving it at the two hundred and fifty by the bridge enables you to go ahead and, and work on that bridge and the apartment, but also cleans up a sliver of property that I may have on the other side, whether it be ten feet wide or fifty feet wide by three hundred, that I can't use, yeah.
Jimmy says a hundred feet wide is, is pretty good, he, he did say that a lot of times what they're including as a clause, like if there's a major cove repair, the, the county then has an additional hundred and fifty feet, seventy-five either side. So, I think that could be included in the language, um, like
In the case of?
Yeah, if, if there's something major repair work there, that we do have two hundred and fifty feet to, um, repair that, major repair. repair that, major repair. The other thing that it does is it puts the property back on the tax roll. So, I mean, it's gonna cost money to get it done with county road funds probably, but it needs cleaned up, so.
And it takes that 300 yards off the tax roll, off the U.K. enacted one, which is now being used for county road.
So, I guess, with that said, I mean, is there any other thoughts on the...
If you're gonna make a motion, do it as well.
Yeah, but, no.
It's gonna be a long one.
So, I mean, there's other options here, too. We don't have to give back the property, you know, on that easement that's 250 feet wide.
Correct.
But, in good faith, it does seem a little bit egregious that it's that wide. I wouldn't want an easement that wide in my place. And if he's willing to do this without costing the county for that section, maybe at some day, maybe 100 years ago, there was something that existed and, and...
I think it's a fair trade.
Yeah.
So, we, so we need basically a new easement on the 300 yards. Okay. If we make that 100 foot easement, road easement, with an additional 75 feet on each side for construction and it, for a construction easement case, have to go back in, that way, they can, they're allowed 75 feet on each side to go in for construction.
Currently, yes. Currently, there's at best a two foot culvert through maybe one or two portions of that road, so I don't think there would ever, that would probably, you know, we're not talking about a six or an eight foot culvert that needs to be replaced. Probably will never happen, but I have no problem with that.
Yeah, that way, it's there just in case it needs to be, but it gives 100 foot easement across that where there is none, so that will come off the tax roll then for you. We maintain, we bring the, by the bridge down to 250 foot width on that section. Right?
Correct. About 300 yards to the end, 250 foot from the bridge above them back to existing roadway or existing easement or whatever. I don't know how you want the word.
So, you guys are on two different pages here. You're saying 100 foot, he's saying 250 on the new one.
No.
No?
No, they're on the same page.
Where, there we have a section that's got a really wide easement that we gotta narrow down, and we have a section that has no easement.
Right.
So, we're wanting to narrow, if we do this survey, we want to narrow the wide section down to 250 foot, right?
From 250 foot down to?
Down to.
That's what I was talking about.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna try, just do a quick printout.
Yep.
Yeah, she could've just took a call.
Oh, yeah, you've got it here, okay. Sorry.
So, that you're understanding, looking at the same thing, I'm sorry.
So, we're, what we're talking about is from, I'm gonna call the edge of the bridge, point A. This spot, point B.
Sorry, I was...
I've got some already.
Fully listening.
So, from point A to point B, we would have 250 foot wide easement and whatever that distance is from point A to point B, if it's 300 yard, whatever it is.
From which portion? Just the cross portion?
Right here from the bridge to where the current easement exists. And then from point B to point C, we reduce it to 100 feet wide, but with a 75 foot construction, as if needed, yeah.
Yeah, it's only, only bill you use if there's construction, otherwise it's...
But if you use part of that for construction, where you reseated and stuff like that?
I would assume, I mean...
But, you know, take the fence down, put the fence...
Yeah. I would assume, yeah.
That's all we don't wanna do.
Yeah, it probably will never happen, but...
We don't wanna assume what we wanted in writing, so we ain't addressing this issue again.
I know when they did the bridge R and R out at Buffalo Creek, they borrowed dirt from one of the neighbors there, had to take fence out, reseated it, put fence back in, and I think it's a common practice of the county to do that, but...
I will agree. I would agree.
So, does anybody have a different idea?
Well, I was just gonna, instead of trying to make this all into a motion, can we instead make a motion for perhaps you and Ted and Michael to work together writing this up? I mean, we're in agreement that we wanted to it, where we can agree, we can make a motion to agree.
Let's make a motion on, I guess, for me to feel better about that so that nothing been done by me solely. I would make a motion that we, again, going from the railroad bridge, point A, to the existing easement, point B, to...
This section right here?
Yes, sir. No, no.
So, what are you doing from point this to point that?
Yeah.
To get a...
The current, asking for an easement from the Urban family.
Like here, that part?
250 feet wide.
It's a little tiny one.
Yep.
Okay.
250 feet wide by whatever the distance that is to the 300 yards, whatever. So, whatever the surveyor comes up with, that that distance is, that is not currently, that is currently being taxed to the Urban family. And then from that point B to the highway department fence, we decrease to 100 feet wide with a 70 foot wide agreement to, for major construction on your side.
I'm just going to the tape.
Yeah, question for you. Are you talking 75 from the center of the road or additional 75 from the edge?
I would say, from what Jimmy said, if they do 250, so there'd be 75 from either side.
From the center of the road?
No, from that, 75 from that 100 foot. So, it'd be 175 on either side.
So, you go all the way to the existing fence line?
Yes, yeah.
If needed.
If needed.
Okay. So, are you okay with that?
I think that's way excessive for any construction that would be out there.
Yeah, I don't think it'd quite happen. They just said, usually when they're creating these, they put that clause in there.
Yeah, as long as we're agreeing, I'm okay with that.
So, the motion could state, from the county road bridge, or the railroad bridge, to the current county road easement, it'll be 300 feet wide by roughly 300 yards long. And then from that point to the highway department right away fence, we'll reduce it to 100 feet wide with a additional 75 foot construction easement, if needed.
Did you mean to say 300 feet wide or 250?
250.
250.
Well, not 250, then he says 50, so I crossed it out.
250 feet wide for the first 300 yards.
Yep.
Right off the bridge.
Right off the bridge.
From there to the highway, 100 foot wide.
Yeah.
With the 75 foot construction.
That's what I want.
So, I'll try it. He moved to get, Nate moved to get an easement from the railroad bridge to the current county road easement and a 250 foot. It's not easement.
It's a right away.
It's right away. Well, he said easement.
Right away easement.
Well, it's its own better county or some easement.
Yes.
Okay, from the railroad bridge to the current county right away and then, and then 250 feet wide an easement, right? Change the right away, 250 feet wide to point to the right away fence, reduce to 150 feet wide with a 75 foot construction easement, 150. We just want it wide.
I retract my motion. I mean it.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, I'm sorry.
Make a motion that we authorize the attorney to work with Mr. Urban for an easement for, what do you want to put it at, right away versus easement?
Where you start at?
At the railroad bridge.
To the current.
That's an easement.
Okay. For an easement approximately 300 yards long, 250 feet wide from the railroad bridge going southwest to tie up to the, where the current easement is.
Right away.
Right away is, that is 250 foot wide. We will reduce that 250 foot wide easement.
Right away.
Right away. Right. Like, go down.
Someone will be sorry later if we don't go down.
We reduce the 250 foot right away to 100 foot right away with an additional 75 foot construction easement on the edge.
If needed.
Right up. To tie to the distance of the right away fence, highway right away fence.
Clear as mud.
Just one, with all survey costs incurred by the...
And re-vent.
And re-vent.
And, well, no big deal. To get it standard on fencing, I was just gonna say whatever the highway standard is for me, so we got...
We even killed the internet with that.
Don't read it.
So...
I'm not repeating it, I'll go to the tape.
But that could be in the agreement.
I've got a little map here that actually we can, and I put right away.
It matters.
We have to also authorize the survey.
Yeah.
Yep. Clear as mud, but I think we can get it in writing in our minutes, so it is, and we will have at the next meeting, if there's any cleanup needs to be done on, in our minutes, we can take care of it then.
Well, I hope that if we get it, the attorney gets something worked out, he can present that to you and then you officially can accept that, whatever that is.
Can I second this motion for discussion?
Please do.
Don, I'm gonna second it.
Okay.
Do we need to have a survey done before we, you prepare the legal work on it? So, okay, so, in that motion, we're gonna pay for the surveying to be done to have the legal work be created to finalize it. Okay.
So, we may not be able to have it all at the next meeting, but at least we're gonna get the ball rolling so that it's taken care of.
Who's hiring the...
Who's calling this, is this their ass?
I would, I would say Jimmy, because he works with Bear Law, they're down here. They've been doing law surveying. So, we'll reach out to Jimmy to have him and maybe get this done.
Please. So, you want to reach out, Jimmy, or?
I'll reach out to him. I'll make copy of my, this one here that's got some boundaries and kind of stuff on it, so Jimmy can direct him where to go.
I have my copy there.
You're on it.
Oh, gosh, that was the absolute legal copy. That was the only copy in file. I probably got four more copies.
Mine's got the blue lines on it.
Okay, I think we have somewhat established, we lost our internet, I'm trying to get it back, but we have a motion that's been properly seconded, I'm not gonna try to repeat the motion.
Me either.
Is there any discussion over? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Sorry to...
Wow.
Wow. Do you need, what do you need done? I mean, once the survey is done, you can do the legal.
I will make appropriate changes after the easement and the easement, or whatever that you remember.
Right away and easement.
Whatever it's called.
If you want us to meet your copy as well, I can maybe have, I might have our G I S set, you could probably map your changes that might assist the survey.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Do you, do you have?
I guess, I'm Ted Urban. Yeah, we'll wait for, hopefully, somebody, when they get a survey, they'll contact you or contact you guys.
Then I'll make better notes.
And then we'll have something to work with. If that's all right, or if you've got time, be careful of that. You're free, free to call me, we'll try to find a time, but what I'm after in an agreement and what they're after in agreement and...
The new store. This is the one-stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootlegger's liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's 30 people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their donuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Okay, I'm doing everything I can to get this internet to connect back up and it's only at one bar, so it's not connecting. I'm sorry for my lack of attention to what we were talking about, I'm just trying to make it clear. Okay, I'm doing what I can, even that signal's out of my control, so I can't really make anything about that right now.
See you, Ted.
Moving on. Paint on the copula. Go ahead.
All right, so the update you asked for was warranty information of that. Sean says he'll give us a year warranty. We'll use a crane to get his guys up to paint it and strip it. Bears on improvement said no warranty. And also said it may cost more because he is a single person, and if we have any rain or weather, it'll cause us to have to extend the rental on the 120 foot.
And we're, we're not gonna, sorry. This would be June, July, or something like that.
I think at this point, just put on that back burner until it's getting too cold.
I'll jump back on it first thing spring when it starts warming up. The other two things I brought you today were the windows you had asked me about over the library, and then we also have the motor on the AC unit at the library. Powder River says, normal work that they do, if it's a new equipment they're putting in, it's a year warranty on their parts and labor. Unlike the machine over here or the AC unit, it would be a 30-day warranty on labor and a year warranty on motor. And then the windows from architectural specialists say that they have a 10-year warranty on the window and it's a year warranty on board.
My apologies to the people that are on Zoom, we just got our internet connection back. So, it's the pleasure of the board.
Brandon, I have a question about your, the window. I'm a little slow today. Is that just repairing?
That's replacing those windows, the ones that have the seals down.
Is replacing a whole bunch of windows?
There's the two, well, the one here on the side and there's two in the front, actually, at the director's office that we found. I walked around with the window guys and we looked at all the windows. We found one over here and then two at the director's office.
So, that's, that's the difference for actually replacing windows?
Yeah, replacing three windows.
Let's see, who is? That's why I'm questioning you.
Yep.
Okay.
And fixing the seal on the median, which they didn't put on there, but it's just gonna fix, let it go down.
And that includes our mileage, everything's obvious. For three windows in a building like that, I feel that's probably right in line. For three windows in a building like that, I feel that's probably right in line.
Do we have to, we, we probably have to get the president's storage accreditation board.
At the library?
Not for a window, not for a window repair. I do have a repair on the basement. I'm gonna have to get, um, John Francis or if you guys know of any other relations, it would be good to work on the zone in the book sale room. I don't know how long it's been there. There's water damage and it's like it's years upon years old and there's all the plaster is flaking off and some of the stones flaking. That needs to be addressed.
Do we want to do two separate motions or do we want to do one motion with both of them?
On the, this, for like the.
For the AC repair and then the windows. I think I, I have to work up with two motions just to be able to two different students. Make a motion that we authorize the replacement of three windows at the library to Architect's Specialties to amount of $2,424.91. Second.
Have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Second. Second, I would make a motion if we authorize powder overheating and air conditioning to replace a condenser fan on a condensing unit at the library to the amount of $1,385.
Second.
I have a motion that's been properly seconded. Any discussion on the replacement of the condenser and motor fan? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Let me see your copy. I have one. I have one.
Go ahead, Evan.
Did anybody have a window one that came out right? I'll reprint it.
Hey Brandon, hold your head a little angle when you put the printout up.
Right.
Okay, procurement procedures.
We can talk that off the week if that's with the branch.
Okay, good. Uh, our, our travel funds, building grounds and funds decision, discussion? Do we want to move that to the next meeting because we're, we're kind of asking for that anyway for our points of need? Is that appropriate for the board or do you guys?
I believe it is, yeah. I don't think it's a utmost urgent thing that it gets, it just needs to be, we need to start. And I think for this stuff here is a good process. We're starting on some of the type of windows and.
I have no objections. Was there, do we have to have a spent date on that?
No, it's technically.
Since we brought in as every replacement, we didn't.
Spent, but the, I think to clean things up with auditors and everything, they would like to see it spent.
So we'll put that on the next.
Yeah, I think it's just a, if we don't discuss it occasionally, then I think we're, it'll just get on the back burner and we'll not, we'll get things cut off.
Vault side, update.
Yeah, Mr. Tiscana's finishing up the complaint. Sorry it's taken a little bit. Uh, I did reach out to Mr. Campbell again and this time he's actually responded. Um, he says, I contacted our lawyer. As far as I understood it, the existing contract would continue to serve its purpose moving forward. If you'd like a new contract, I will speak with our attorney and discuss the topic. So, I mean, the percentage is better with the existing contract. We just need to clean up the language in that contract so it actually is enforceable. Um, yeah, the percentage is way better.
So if that's the case, if we go back to the existing contract, then those checks that he sent aren't even close to.
They're not. So.
So he also owes a lot of money.
So how do we move forward with this and how do we collect them? I mean, because I think this has sat for quite some time now. We haven't seen, I don't think we've seen money in a while, correct?
Yeah.
I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be comfortable moving into any other additional contracts until we get settled up today on what is owed.
Cause he also squared that to the April of last year.
So basically Vault Side, they are acknowledging that they are gonna owe us from what the original contract was.
Yeah, we have it in writing.
Okay. So yeah, I would.
Should we do a demand for payment for the, the.
Yeah, we'll do that and I'll make a, a formal demand and.
Do we have a number of what is owed to date?
Becky got us. It's hard to figure out.
Roughly.
Yeah. Yeah, we have, Becky got all the numbers sorted together. If you could explain it to me better.
Well, up until what I sent, broken Michael, when they started working on it before. They are the ones that track who goes to their site, who downloads them yearly, monthly, weekly. And then they also charge them per download. And then Vault Side would give us 80% of that and then an additional 80% per um, subscription and then 20% per download. So we were getting a lot of money and that was per month they would give us that. They would send us then, um, they would send us the check and then they would also send us who subscribed, um, how many pages each person, um, downloaded. So then they would give us that printout. Well then, the last few checks that they sent us was very vague. It didn't say who subscribed, who printed what. And it was not even close to what we were getting. It was whatever they agreed on, what the 30% or, we don't even know if that's what they were sending, sending us.
No.
Nothing has ever been discussed.
20%.
So my question is how do we know what they owe us?
We don't.
So how do we enforce an amount if we don't even know?
So I printed off the whole year prior what we should have been getting and business was steady. I mean, it never dropped off. So, but April, I stopped sending them the updates to the, um, website because we stopped sending this late, so the, the website hasn't been updated since April. So people have to come near, actually physically look it up and then if they do the download, then we're, it was given the April that way.
Jill Sellers was our person who went into this and that's, and the reason we went into with this company when we did it because we was gonna be able to recoup our expenses from setting it up and have an income source off of our records. Is why we, why we went down this road and we did. That was eight years ago.
Well, and we were the first county.
Yeah, we were, they gave us a good deal to get their foot in the door.
It's not.
That's, you know, some groundwork, where, how we got to where the dish.
You can only search up until or back to like 20 or 2000. Anything prior to that, you cannot put someone's name in to search and.
Well, even trying to search like any other.
It's not user friendly at all.
No, it's not like IDOC is, you just type a name in. If you type the name in this, you.
And we're working with them. To get, yes, to get it.
So are we at the point of, like I said, are we gonna do a demand for payment to get this current?
Yes, and then Anthony's, um, he is fin- finalizing the complaint we talked about. Deputy Attorney Tiscana.
Are you okay if we add that to the next agenda with a, a letter for, for payment at the next meeting?
Yeah.
Or maybe before we travel, is anyone having objections to that? I got another question. Do they own our records or do we own?
We do.
We do.
So if we demand our records, if they have all on file, they are obligated to give them to us. So if we go to, with IDOC, we can take the records.
I can have them on a different drive, but those that they have on their website, I have no idea. That, that's.
Remember the contract, right? It's still our property.
So they, we can demand them, it's just their portion of ours on their website now.
We gotta make sure we have all of our stuff.
You know, this move forward, I want to make sure that we don't lose all the stuff that went through and got scanned and put in to record.
So we have a copy of it. We're, we're covering that. Just, yeah, but I kept saying, so we don't, we're not talking a thousand dollars here or go significantly amount of that.
Yeah, that's it.
I would, I would also ask that maybe we could get some kind of estimate of what is owed on that command letter so that we're not just asking for a blank amount?
Oh yeah, I'll work with Becky. She, she understands.
I just think we need to tighten it down a little bit.
She understands the numbers better than I do.
Well, I mean, we should be able to go for what we put in, what they owe us off of past records. This is where we were at per month. You know, and this is why, what we're basing our request on is past usage was here and that's where we're at. Is that how we're gonna do that?
I mean, it's not a certain number, but I think that's a reasonable basis to me.
What we do. A total month average and this is where it come out and we, we feel you owe us this much on an average for these months.
So we'll move that on to the agenda with a, a letter expected at the next meeting with the, a demand for whatever that number is. And we'll have that number estimated, I guess, at this point, I would call it. It's not probably an exact science, but. If the board's okay with that. Okay. Moving on to new business. Bid expectations, I think we kind of touched.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody's good with that.
Oh yes, I'm sorry. Okay. The letter to the city.
Yeah, I, I just got in contact. We discussed it at the last meeting that I called Mr. Stolten to, um, try to get something done and the, uh, we were just gonna send it, but he just thought it'd be best to bring it back here just so you guys saw it first before we called Mr. Stolten to, um, try to get something done and the, uh, we were just gonna send it, but he just thought it'd be best to bring it back here just so you guys saw it first before we and they hadn't sent it on though, so. And I think it's, the only thing it doesn't state is that, that money is gonna be turned over to unclaimed, whatever it is.
Unclaimed property.
Unclaimed property. If they don't do some of it, but I don't think that needs to be in the, I mean, what's written here is clear.
Does it need to be? If he contends that, I don't think it needs to be.
Well, my question was maybe Commissioner Todd knows or Commissioner Wagner, but if it, if it doesn't need to be, why wouldn't that just be turned over to the dispatch board?
That was prior. This is, this is the city's money.
Because basically we've got checks issued that ain't been cashed.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue. They, they were giving it as payment to the city of Newcastle. They are, they chose not to cash them because they were wanting the larger sum and that was never agreed on because there was never a contract. So those two checks are just sitting somewhere not being cashed. So Suzie and visited with you guys and you suggested Michael Wright and the letter, so if they're not gonna cash them, those can just be.
Wouldn't they have to come to us for new checks at this timeframe anyway? Or is the bank gonna cash them?
There's not 90 days.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's no money to go on it and it's probably been accounted for last fiscal year. So that's why it maybe has to go to unclaimed property. It can't be, I don't know that, but.
I think they can just merge it out.
Well, with Michael's sentence letter, it's got the ball rolling. So the ball's in their court. What are they gonna do? They gonna cash them? They gonna return them? If we don't hear nothing back, we stop aiming on them and move on.
I, I agree.
And have the accountant adjust the books back like it needs to be.
And I'm okay with the letter. So basically this is a, well, we haven't got a response back yet.
You haven't sent it?
No, I haven't sent it because I want to.
Yeah, I'm okay with this letter.
You want a motion to send it or are you okay just send it?
I'd prefer a motion if you guys.
I can do a motion to, um, send the county attorney's letter that we've asked him to send to Mr. Dublin Hughes at the city of Newcastle to try to clear up our dispatch.
Second. Have a motion properly seconded. Any discussion? So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, so. Bid expectations, we, I don't know what we didn't touch on that with.
Did we do library resources that? Did you put that on the agenda?
What's that?
Library resources?
Uh, not resources, that was the bids.
Oh, that was the bids. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
So do we, we did touch on that with the request?
Yeah, and I think Garrett was reading the other meeting. I mean, I can't remember what you were looking at that day here, but I mean, you were shooting off some, some things that was requested by another county and those, those bid regai- uh, rate, rate requirements for that county. Yeah, and I thought, I mean, that sounded good. If we can adopt that into whatever our procurement plan is, that's probably wise to do.
Yeah, I think the bid expectations we made pretty clear on that. We need to see more warranty, what's being done instead of paint.
But do we, but we kind of need to maybe formulate, maybe that's not for today, but we, here's a bid sheet, I guess, and these are our, what, what we asked to.
That might be a really good idea.
That way it's everybody can hand it out.
I, I think I, I, sorry.
I'm still thinking here.
Okay, I, I, I passed out this procurement policy procedures from BART County. Did you guys look at that at all?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's what Garrett was. And we have a procurement policy, but I don't know that it has that literature in it for like wording.
What, what I was thinking with, uh, Miss Jenkins and Becky working to change that wording in there on our procurement that if, at the same time, we figure out what we want in there on like the warranty stuff on our bids. So we could, when they, we change that procurement policy we have, we do it once.
And the, the bids need to be more detailed, like you said, not, not just.
I mean, our paint and supplies, 2,500.
A bit formal bids are that way, but just our, our local bids from the local contractors have gotten pretty lax, you know, on what we want in them. And this way, if we have that in, in our procurement policy, we say, hey, page two, procurement policy spelled out what we want in our bids for warranty.
Well, and I think that would have helped us with our elevator situation too, because we, now we have to go back after, so I, I agree with what you said.
I think, I think it's a little confusing because I think what Kim's working on is, is she's, she's working on grant procedures and we're talking about, uh, procurement policy. It's kind of, they're, they're together, but they're separate. And so I'm not sure if this is something that you should put on her. I think maybe we should have a workshop and maybe just go through and, I mean, if we find a policy like this that we, we like, I have this, like I have this uh, in PDF file where we can go in and, and change it however we want to.
Do we have a bid sheet right now?
There are bids sheets, um, for grants. I'm gonna have to all look through some of those stuff.
I was hoping to put it on, Miss Jenkins, but when we, when we make that change, because she's, we have to have that policy and procurement procedure for grants. When we make the change, we make it all at once. I mean, it's hard, we need to go in and do it, but when we do it, it's working conjunction.
Make sure they work in conjunction.
Yeah, that's all we want. So we.
What if we add it to the business and, and if you bring the procurement policy that we have currently and whatever you can find for that checklist and then maybe next meeting, we can finalize it, like this looks good to us or let's just add a couple of little things.
Maybe we can get a process format whenever, like even if it's Sean or whoever, the local ones, we hand them the bid sheet saying this has, people are kind of like, kind of like a voucher, we make them do that, just make them do that, and that way it's more information for us and maybe a little better security for us too. Good idea, so we'll put it on the. Prepay Wyoming State Bar County Attorney's Office.
So they got these bills after vouchers were to be in, and they don't want to pay on credit card. I have three bill to the Wyoming State Bar, and one's for 3.55, two are for 3.55 and one's for 3.80. And so I just need permission to do three, well, do one check for prepay.
What are they for?
They're for yearly, yearly member dues, and they're due by November 15th.
Yeah, so even though vouchers will be due again before that, the checks won't actually go out.
You want a motion to pay?
Yes, please.
Make a motion to pay the three, prepay the three bills to the Wyoming State Bar Association for dues.
Yeah, the three attorneys.
Yeah.
Have a motion, do I have a second? Have a motion that's been properly seconded in any discussion on the attorney's prepaid. All those.
I just made it look record show just because of timing is why we're doing it this way.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, so we'll do that in the process of signing. So our next, let's skip anything, is the other public comment. I've had a request, doesn't want to let the board know, but I've had a request to do a call in because they can't get on the, I'm not sure why. Do we want to do that? The request is from Bob Bonnet. He in person? He's, I guess, not around, but should I do the call in or what would you, what was the board's?
I love public comment, we got public here. If it's worth comment, be here in person.
Well, I mean, I understand, but the internet's been acting up too, so I'm gonna go with whatever the board decides what he did request that he'd be allowed to comment.
I am refraining from any attacks towards anybody though.
Well, I hope the board see I did, I opened the, there won't be any answers.
If anybody's read this email that Becky sent to the Secretary of State, it's pretty obvious what happened, and it was a mistake.
I'm not.
So, and they're fixing it.
Should I allow the comment, call, and then go over there and tell, so, should I, yes?
Obviously, there's been something posted out by the way people are responding to me, so something's been put out on the internet. I would accept comment.
I'll allow the comment.
One question for you. So we do this, we're gonna allow public comments from wherever they want to come in from, from New York City, California?
That's a very good point.
You just, you just set a precedent, if you're gonna let anybody and everybody call in to your phone and say, hey, I've got a request.
Okay, that's fair.
So that's, do we want to go down this road? Because it could open up a can of worms, it's just, it's gonna be a mess.
That's a very good point.
I would also think that he has an opportunity at the next meeting to.
Get on the agenda.
Or be on.
And we did move it to the next agenda too, so that's, those are good points that I'm not gonna argue with, but I just, I don't know if that's why I'm asking.
I feel like Commissioner Wagner made a very good point, Dan, so I'll rescind my answer. I don't think we need to make that precedent.
That's fine, so we have, I'm gonna, I'm not gonna hold on that, and we'll just, I'll, I'll, and we'll send a text to him or I will call him and say, just put it on to the next agenda, first comment there. Commissioner's comment. Commissioner Todd.
I feel bad for what's taking place, I think Becky takes her job pretty seriously and unfortunately, some mistakes happen. We're all human. So I, I understand that this was a major thing, it's upset a lot of people, but I just hope the community can have a little patience on this and understand that we are all human and nothing was maliciously done. She's fixing it, she's working with the Secretary of State to solve the problem. Hopefully cooler heads prevail.
Commissioner.
I, I agree with Commissioner Todd, I, I think that there's, there's steps in place to correct it. I hope that there's not a lot of accusations and finger pointing at, at this point because it's something that sounds like it's possible that there was no reason to get upset. It's, it's something that happened, it's an anomaly, a non, yeah, I can't say that word today. Thank you. I, I felt like the people I talked to said that the, the turnout was very good for the election and it went terribly smoothly, and I did have someone tell me that they were very happy with how they were treated when they went in. So, thank you, Stan.
It's what I do. It would really be nice if apologies came out Becky as fast as the accusations did. You know, there's been a lot of accusations out there and apologies would go a long way if they would come back as fast as accusations went out. Otherwise, I mean, I've heard nothing, but everybody was, you know, the way the election went, everybody was, they moved smoothly, it smoothed, went smoothly, I mean, it was, there was no glitches. If this anomaly comes up, you know, and it's apparent, they're working on it, I mean, there's, it's not being swept under the rug like a lot of accusations are wanting to be made, it's being addressed. So let the system do its thing and whatever comes out at the end of it, we agree with it and we move on. That's who I'm at on this to be.
Commissioner Ford. I, I echo this this morning, I'll echo it again, I think the mistakes, all of us can learn from mistakes and learn apologies, thank you, right? I think that none of us are doubting that everybody wants accurate results. I think that it's being addressed with Chuck Gray, I think it's being addressed when that, when the information comes out. That's when we deal with it, not prejudge or preassume, and it may just be a one thing, just one little thing, and machines were obviously, or the ballots may have been printed wrong from what I understand, and that isn't the fault of the clerk, that is, so, the corrections will be made, and we've got a commitment from the clerk that this will not be certified until it's explained and fixed, so I think that's good enough for, at least, that's good enough for me, and we've all, we're all been involved in elections, so I hope that it's resolved and it's moved forward. I, I haven't seen any negative towards Becky, but I don't think she deserves it, if it's not her fault, so. Okay. Moving on to vouchers. Thank you, Dan, thank you, appreciate you coming on.